But I just.
But what's that leading out to drainage?
The drain.
You know the solution too?
Yeah, I know.
Oh, okay.
Water runs downhill, it's pretty sucky.
But in front of our house, the drains goes to the middle ponds. Yeah, with trees and bushes, they stay cleaned out.
Yeah, the ditches are so stocked up, the drainage. Y'all came out and cleaned all the ditches out, but the two major ones there, you know, the drain across the highways.
Yeah.
Well, if you follow that drainage ditch over into the lake over there.
Yeah.
The culverts are higher than the ditches, you know, the ditches, you know, they got a.
State highway ditches?
Well, what if somebody did you take that down?
It's not ours either.
Okay, well.
Who would request to get that out of here?
The state highway.
Sewer system, y'all, right? Am I right about that?
Sewer system, yeah.
Well, if you got water coming out of sewer system, I have my yard.
Popping those lids.
Just popping the lids off of it, I got, I got four of those, I got two actually in my yard. And then I've got two more around my yard.
I don't know really what to say unless John would look into it as an engineer.
I've been told, I've been told about donuts, you can put donuts in it, that's what construction jobs do.
We've talked about that, put that on that, on that bigger one down there, didn't we? I thought we were going to do that.
Well, you'd have to do it on all of them around it, you can't go to one. But it's gonna, it's gonna, you can't do just one.
I'll just get John to look into, that's all I know, that he's the engineer and I'm not, and I know you all, but he, he, he's the engineer for us.
Well, I was over construction for about twenty years.
I know you were, I know you were.
And I, I know we can fix problems there.
Well, let us know, can we walk around with you?
Yeah, I mean, I get pretty good info on that. I did a bunch of homework on landfills and stuff. I know how to foundation and stuff.
Okay, that's what we'll do.
Okay.
Okay, y'all, after the call.
Is there any timeline on that at all?
When do you think you might check into that, John?
Um, I'll, I'll arrange a time, uh, get with Mike, one day next week.
Okay, you want my cards?
Well.
We know where you live.
You want my phone number?
They got it, so we'll get you.
And we'll let you know ahead of time.
Thank you.
I'm speaking to you, speaking to you.
That's the problem you get into, you fix one ditch, you're gonna have some more people lined up. All of that's the way the books are. All right, first thing on the list is John Freeman. Uh, John's here, uh, to discuss the issues downtown. I called John to, to, to talk about it some more because, you know, we talked to Tim Smith about putting a swell in there and, uh, y'all approved forty-four thousand, I think it was, for him to go ahead and do that. Um, but I got to thinking about the fact that the, the biggest problem here that, that everybody downtown tells me, and I've taken pictures of this, movies and everything else, is the, the massive river that comes down Church Street and shoots downtown. And, um, I've seen, I've seen videos of it. And so the question I had was how do you stop that water from, from rushing downtown like it is? And so I asked John about it, talked to John about it, and I've had several other, I think Dick had a comment about possibly putting cul- big culvert under the, under the road there, right, right before you cross over, right after you pass Carter Federal. And, um, and do something with taking the water out there. And John had a couple of ideas about that. You know, kind of cut the road and let it go in the road like a grate and go down in there and then suck it off to work what Tim's doing on the side over here, which seemed to me like that would keep it from ever getting downtown, you know? But John will explain, I can't, I'm not engineering, he can explain it. But for, for those, and I apologize to John and to y'all, I, I hadn't gotten John up here and introduced him to, to the new, new people on, on the council. Uh, John's been an engineer here at the city for, how long, John, have you been working?
Thirty years.
Thirty years. He's been doing projects here with the city for thirty years. Right now, he just got through with a, a design in a sewer, uh, that was actually we had on Seven Streets Southeast and we just finished it. Uh, he's also, we've been working on three, uh, three different, uh, well, we've got several things to work on. He's gonna talk to you about one and item number two. Uh, we've got a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar recreation complex grant. The cooperative endeavor has been signed, everything's been done, right, we're through it, except for the work.
Yeah, the paperwork's done, that's right.
So, field four will be finished. He's designed it and he, he will be there to, to make sure it's finished like it's supposed to be. But, uh, the grant has been granted, all paperwork's been done by us. So, also, the, uh, cooperative endeavor has been signed on the sewer wastewater treatment plant. And, uh, that's the three point two million dollars, uh, for that. And John did all, uh, he, he designed the whole plant and he, he's been with it from the very first. It's completely finished, he's completely finished his work, but now, uh, now it's time to get started, right?
Yeah.
Also, he, uh, we've done, uh, we, we finished our part of the six million dollar phase three water, um, grant. Uh, we haven't got the cooperative endeavor back on it yet, though. But all the work has been done, right? I mean, we've got the survey and all of that.
The survey is done, we're still, we're working on the design of it all right now.
Because John subbed it out to, uh, to Cody, Cody Goodwin. Cody did all that work for us and trying to use him, being a local guy, but, um, so I was glad he got to have that work. Uh, he's also redoing well number six, we got, we got working on it. Uh, I just wanted you to be aware of all the things he has got going for us right now and in the future, all the things he's done. And he's done tremendous amount for us in the past. But, um, I'll just kind of turn it over to John to kind of first talk about, uh, what, what his ideas are as far as that drainage problem downtown.
Let me go ahead and just maybe tell y'all, so, um, to actually figure out the, uh, the flows that we call the same Church Street right there where the railroad used to be with the, the walk path crosses. I went in, I went in and figured and, uh, I'm gonna show this, I hope you can see it. This is here's Church Street, then Baker, North Arkansas. Um, this in the pink is the drainage area for that up there, okay? So, from, from the first section up there by Brookshires, um, you know, it falls down toward the high school. Uh, and so as it falls, part of that water will come here, but if, I know you can't see them because they're orange, but there, these contours across here, so it's all falling toward that, that point right there. And between here and there, you have forty-six cubic feet.
Twenty ruptures in there?
Uh-huh, yeah.
And if there being, there being where Tennessee droves used to be, there is the nail salon, right? Is that what we're talking about?
Well, in front of the, um, what's the, not the C, it's the, the.
What's that?
Army building is where, yeah, where we're talking about. Anyway, so, um, and that's, uh, twenty-seven acres that we're talking about, the drainage there. So, based on that slope and, um, the time concentration for rain events, and I did, I went in and used a hundred year storm on this. A lot of times, um, we use twenty-five to set colors, to make sure we carried everything, I wanted to use a hundred year storm. And so in that, so we're talking about, um, the flow of sixty-three and a half cubic feet per second crossing right here. All, and it all comes from right here because you have a, you know, you have a curb, so everything is coming, when it comes down these streets, it's hitting that road and coming down. So it's, they're, they're right, you have a, a good bit of water coming down through there. So, uh, just to kind of give you a little background on that. And then my, uh, I told the mayor I was gonna have two options. One of them was a, a pipe like this that has a slotted drain at the top of it. And we put it transverse to the traffic and as the water come down the hill, uh, we put it down there, um, where, where it falls right there and collected before it went across where the old track was. But that much water, this can't handle it, I'll just let you know. So this, this option is out.
So let me ask you something.
Okay.
So the water's coming from this area, not the opposite area, that's where we're gonna be at work?
All right, runs that way.
Now, we're trying to get rid of the water that way.
Oh, okay, so here's Brookshires. It, 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 as it comes, you know, part of it comes down Baker and then comes down these streets this way. And then what falls in that, on the subdivision here, you know, comes that way. So it all ends up coming here.
I see what you're talking about, you're talking about those buildings, the business is downtown.
Yeah, I was saying.
We're trying to keep the water, we're trying to get it there.
Yeah, this, this is before that point, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna try to catch it and collect it here before, before it even crawls where the old railroad track was and get to the building.
The initial analysis costs an over getting that curb ruined out with a building on it. Cause that the lowest point on the street.
So what we were planning to do is try to help you.
I don't know that.
I don't see how it could have done.
It would help a little bit, but, so what, if, if we can collect all this, the, the drainage area that's right here will become very minimal, you know? So that, that helps a lot of that. So, you know, back in this, so that, this option was out, so.
That's a shame, I never thought that would work.
Well, it, it, it does work, but with that amount of water, you'd have to, I wouldn't eat too much of that.
I saw that as a reminder.
Right.
Yeah, so the other option I was talking about was at that low point where we're talking about, um, Carter Federal was putting in a, uh, like a riding culvert and then as the water come down the hill, have it shed off to, to both sides and the side of the park would keep going down and the other side collecting come under the road. That, that's, huh? That's what I told Ray. Yeah, so anyway, I, I know this one's really hard to see because it's in, it's in black, uh, in color, but, um, and I, I'd be happy to pass this around. So, uh, the, what I did was I said, I looked and said, okay, everything that you'll, when you pass around, you see in blue is, um, where we had to do some asphalt work, because what we, what needs to happen is as you're coming down that hill, it's pretty much a straight slope, there's a little dip in here, but we need a more, we need a better slope back in here somewhere to help, you know, divert the water. So what I'm suggesting is we come in and we survey this limit right here and, and redesign this intersection. And, and then still put a culvert that crosses here that would match into this, this swell that we're gonna go through the park. And on this side, put a, a concrete sump, so as the water comes down, and you know in the, in the road, you have a slight crown, so part of it can go to the north part of the south. So, um, so as it comes down, that would shed, come across, and then this sump would collect it and send it under the road here. And then as this come down, we'd have a, a big concrete plume to catch this water off and still, and catch it to come out this way. So it would all end up going in the same direction. Now, if you have looked up there, there's a curve in like here and here that are, I'm gonna say they're not in good shape. So part of the project is to, to work those and then where that, that pipe comes across to here and then it goes across to, gets over here, we would intercept that pipe in a junction box in this same line here, so all the water would get this way. And then, uh, like I said, we'd have a different swell here, and so very little bit would go across that way and we'd catch it all and collect it and come out this way. And, um, that, that, to me, that would be a, a, you know, a simple fix and kind of like the challenge.
And then after that, we'd still go down pretty bad on that, uh, west side of that, on the track.
With a, with a swell, yeah, we want to, we want to put a different drainage swell.
Over to the hole.
Yeah, that's correct, yeah, you get it, get it all down, yeah. And, uh, so, um, what I was, and all my calculations on this, this construction would only be, would be about sixty-nine thousand dollars to do all that work, yeah.
Oh.
But, um, but one thing was, and I'm glad you brought up Cody, cause it, you know, I would like to, to survey that just to make sure we'll be tied into the road here. The only problem I see is where, where Carter Federal has this driveway here. Whatever work we do here, we gotta make sure that all that still works. But, you know, we wanna, you know, get a good swell in there, so I, I had, uh, for the engine and survey would be fifteen thousand for that and the construction is sixty-nine and then plus forty-four, whatever we're doing.
Yeah.
You're looking at about a hundred fifty?
Still doing the work on the up, on this side of the track.
Yeah.
All right. That, that we can solve all those problems.
Yeah, he's helping, look at that.
Yeah.
I hope you can see that, I'm sorry about the color, so it's, and I got it kind of hatched for the different things. If you, um, if you can see, blue is where all the asphalt work would be and then, but actually, we'd redo these curves to make sure it funnel the water like we needed to, and then that's the, um.
Can we fix the curb going down, um, y'all, for that sign? Is that in there?
The curb on y'all.
Where, where those buildings are.
Oh, no, that's not in there.
That's not in there.
Yeah. Um, and then I, what I have is a thirty-six inch pipe crossing that.
That's just the intersection there.
Yeah, yeah.
And that, that right there, my grab, the patch on that water, it's called sixty-three.
Yeah, yeah, sixty-three and a half cubic feet per second, per second, yeah, it's a lot of water. But, and, and that's because you have such a big drainage area and it's on such a, a steep slope. It's, uh, two point six percent slope, which is pretty steep.
Well, y'all got it. Okay, I appreciate that, John, it'll be something for them to think about.
Yeah.
And we'll, um, bring it up Monday night, see if they want to do it or not.
Yeah.
I appreciate it.
Can I ask another question?
Yeah.
Do we go back to the rec center? You said we got everything for the, the finish, the ball feed?
Yes.
Field four, yeah.
Field four.
Is that gonna cost three hundred feet thousand to do both one feed?
I don't think so, but keep in mind.
The lights and the fencing and everything's.
Well, this is we're coming back and putting the, the, the new max stop up with the.
Correct.
With all the brickwork and then, and, and that field, it's, we never have graded that field, so it flows right, so that'll be all the grading for that field. But also in there included is, we had a bunch of fencing, so we could get all the fencing on the whole rec complex fixed back up, uh, to where it needs to be.
So I was hoping we could do something with that, reg and miss this field.
Well, we may if we have any left, uh, we're talking about the old park that we're going down.
I mean, cause that's gonna be a nice hole with four nice fields and.
Yeah, and it would be a good parking spot.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But we need it.
I mean, dude, we just tore it down, like the steel water and practice.
Sure.
Do things like that, and it's just, the mess is falling and y'all know what.
Sure, yeah, we, we need to do something about it.
Okay, yeah, that's not a problem.
But we can have that.
Yeah, the, the cooperative endeavor agreement, all it just talks about that down there, so it.
Like nobody dug out some kind of like.
Yeah, yeah, it'll encompass anything in that, in that area, in the rec complex down there.
Yeah, that'd be really nice. Okay, well, we'll let them consider that, whether they're gonna do that or not Monday night. Um, next item is, uh, John, it's yours too.
Okay, yeah, this one is, uh, Maple Street Water Mains Project and it's probably, as y'all will know, Maple Street right over here is the last, uh, street in what we call.
Tree set of vision.
Um, to have the water mains upgraded, so, um, we got a, a grant from Delta Regional Authority for two hundred thousand. We got Sea Web, which is Community Water Richen Fund for twenty-five, and we have a LGAAP, which is Louisiana Government Assistance Program for another twenty-five, so we have two hundred fifty thousand dollars set aside to this.
We're not gonna be adding anything.
That's right, that's right, yeah, that's right. And, uh, we opened bids, uh, last week on it and, um, we, we got a really good bid. Our low bid was a hundred thirty-seven thousand forty-five dollars and sixty-nine cents from Buzz Construction, who does quite a bit of work up here. So I went ahead and I've written my letter to the mayor recommending award to them and we've submitted everything to the state for their consideration, so we just need to get y'all, uh, if you would.
To approve that money?
Yeah.
That's, that was easy.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, John, well, I appreciate you coming up and, um, and thanks for all that you did there for us. And, um, welcome, but I understand you probably didn't come back.
Yeah, first of all, I got all that, if, if you want to keep that chain, that other, yeah.
All right.
If I need to, I can bring my bids.
Okay, thank you, John, appreciate it.
Thank y'all.
Okay, next item is, uh, uh, Derek has looked at the.
Order, send an order to.
No, they don't remember.
Oh, oh, I got the origin, okay, we, we changed and added that in there, okay. Yeah, airfield, let's see. Yeah, the contract with, uh, for the airfield pavement, oh, that's for the rehab, they're rehabbing the, uh, the pavement, I think they're gonna redo the pavement, uh, for the fairfield.
This is the state, state program.
We don't have to pay anybody, which is, that's another note right there. That, that, that will come up Monday night. Okay. And then the next one is talking about the same thing, he's talking about. Okay, the next one now is Derek in order to sign, he's updated that, you've got a copy of it here, did you get one then?
Yeah. One of the things we, we, we haven't had to do for a long time was a sign over that's, uh, it was way back before Ray even was in office, that got knocked out of here and we have a real big problem with it. I, I went back and worked up the sign ordinance and tried to be very judicious on how we handle it. Uh, it's in prepart, basically there's a handbill section, which is governed by State Statute thirty-two-five, rule one, which says that you're not supposed to attach stuff to these poles, you're not supposed to distribute common premises, uh, and you're not supposed to leave it on uninhabited private premises, so that pretty much covers all that. And the second part is actually the signs, and it, you know, it's general throughout the city and it covers pretty much everything from replacement. The one question I had and needs to be brought up is that there should be some sort of a permit fee for the, using. This particular one that I looked at in another small town is that, uh, shall a, a current former agent shall rent any, install any sign or sign structure until a sign permit for the work has been issued by the city hall, the contractor owner occupant. And that brings back what happened with the large sign down the street here on Main Street. Uh, or occupant of the premises where the work is to be done, the sign permit fee shall be a hundred dollars plus ten dollars for each thousand dollar value of the sign. For a fraction there, uh, sign permits are separate from building permits for new construction or renovation. And we were told they didn't have to have a building permit because there was no electricity involved, but I do think we need to, uh, look at this part and I, I wanted to bring that before y'all, that's why I highlighted it in here. Everything else is pretty much standard. Uh, we do have some issues with some, uh, vehicles signs that are out too far by the road, uh, and they're, uh, blocking traffic and creating problems. Uh, and it goes through, and the reason is like section, because I didn't know what to say, what we would, uh, coordinates we would, uh, name it showing. And, uh, then it goes into the next part, which is the historic district signage, which, uh, is Amy's area there. And it goes into that, it does not stop these, uh, vendors, like these people who are having their feta flags. Uh, what it does, it takes into effect that we want to keep the back area looking, uh, good and make sure it fits in with our, our historic, our spring, you know, not that we have a lot of history, historic buildings other than maybe the, uh, Spring Theater and a few other buildings there. Those replacements, elimination, much of it, it covers everything. So, and, uh, other towns that have Main Street programs, we have a, a sign limits as well as a historic district ordinance, which I, of course, we're not following right now.
And I know this is something that was in the past, but, you know, I've seen a lot of, uh, estate sale signs and, so how do you, um, would you just go to the address that got listed to, you know, like when they don't get a permit? Cause they do, they're, matter of fact, if they're on the four lane right by the light, right across from Zico.
Right, and this address is where they can put those and they have so many days to keep them up.
But don't they have to get a permit from the very beginning to place a sign?
No, this, this would be the only thing on, now, unless you wanna write that in, but right now, we don't. They don't need to be putting those signs in an area where if a car has to turn from one street to another and they can't see into the other street, they, they, you know, most of the ones that I've seen for the estate sales and garage sales, they're gone by the time that's over with, so they, they're picking them up. Uh, it would be nice to have a uniform garage site of signs, Walmart sells one down there for about three bucks and that way they look decent, not handwritten on piece of paper and stuff up. What they're also doing is sticking them up on the telephone poles and everything else and then when one does it, everybody else feels like they can do it too, so, and that is against the law anyway, to put them up on the telephone poles.
Some political signs are still out.
Yes, I know, and that's another thing, is those, uh, if you read into the Louisiana's patches, if I remember correctly, they have up to thirty days to get rid, get picked up, and I know there's one down in the West Street that a guy had picked up, so. You probably didn't even know it was there, cause somebody put it out there for him.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Just a same, a similar to what she was asking, are you asking about the estate sales that are like the lawn signs that you would push into the ground with like your foot? GG's has some, Bee's Beauties has some, like the.
No, no, I'm talking to the ones they just write on it.
And staple to a pole?
Yeah, they, they need to be.
Garage sale.
Yeah.
Yeah, like actual.
And there are some cities that have a very strict, when it comes down to garage sale, and I think if I remember right, when Johnny Erickson was mayor, they voted in that they could only have two garage sales per year, and I know there's, there's, you know, we.
You're supposed to only have garage sales per year and you're supposed to buy a ten dollar permit.
And they not doing it.
It's five dollars, okay.
Well, I mean, you can buy dollars, you know, and, and obviously do it ten dollars and, and buy a quarter or something. Make the signs, uh, that say garage sale for that ten bucks, they give the sign and they give the, uh, give the, uh, other, the permit.
I don't think you can buy a uniform sign for ten bucks, I think you're going to hold it, you'll be like an inspector's secretary.
Well, you know, what I did is what you want Walmart sales in Florida.
Again, you're talking about the like black and orange ones?
Yeah, that say garage sale.
Garage sale, yeah.
Or you can say you just need to go to Walmart and get a sign or go to a store and get that like uniform sign, basically.
This has been introduced, is it just we're gonna vote on it?
That's it, and we, we, uh.
So y'all need to look at it, read it and see, I guess, and, and if there's anything you don't like about it.
You know, research those out when we're doing things, so.
That's, uh, campaigning is a difference, it's a different animal and it falls under some state rules and regulations. When they say, you know, if I was to go put my, my political sign up on the telephone pole, that would be a problem. You're not, you're, you're, when you campaign, you're maybe putting your card or your, your postcard or your piece of paper on the door and that's covered under different, under the state statutes.
So when you say they need to get a permit, are you talking about, sorry, I just wanna understand, for the downtown businesses? So the vinyl free made sign that are professionally made, that B's has, that GG's has, that are in the ground on certain corners, are those, or are those, would those or would those not be allowed and would they need to get a permit for them?
You wouldn't need, or you wouldn't, in the historic district, you wouldn't put those and, and you shouldn't put that.
I agree, I just wanted to hear.
And, and a sign that's out, you know, if we, if we're gonna go back, those kind of signs you don't need to be, this doesn't say you need a permit. But if you're putting it on the corner, you're not supposed to put it on city property anyway, but if you put it on a corner somewhere, it needs to be down within thirty days.
Okay, so like for example, privately, um, David Smith has that grass lot on Church and Main.
That's the.
Where they put signs.
That's the historic district, that's the.
Private. And if you want them to get a permit, it's for the permanent type of signs, like the giant billboard that were not downtown?
Right, that was, that probably cost them ten thousand dollars or less, a little less than that maybe, and you talk about, you're talking about a hundred and ninety, two hundred dollar permit is what they would have to pay, but that's income to the city, but it also helps us know what's going on out there because I think when we talk about it, when I said, well, do anybody know what's going on, nobody really do. And so.
Nobody's even used the sign.
Pardon?
That big name sign, nobody's even used it?
Billboards right now, you, there's four of them down the highway that, that you can, you can fill up, they're expensive, it's all, you know.
All right, so the lawn signs, I understand, the permanent signs, I understand, what about, um, just asking, the businesses are gonna ask you? The signs, like Nicole has one, and they're on the sidewalk and they put them outside to solicit business. Would those be allowed or not allowed?
It's in the historic district, no, it wouldn't be allowed.
Historic district, no.
They're on the sidewalk, you know?
Yeah, you shouldn't have it on the sidewalk.
I don't have it on the sidewalk.
Assign boards and those type of things, and you should have signage on your building that reflects that.
This, this is just a little sign that says like a sale.
Now, now, what, let me, let me rephrase.
According to that ordinance, it's by the way the law.
Yeah, it, it, it's not a, uh, in the historic district, it's different and it is out, yeah, historic.
Who's owning historic district? Y'all have a board? Yep.
Yeah, so the Main Street Board right now is acting as both according to the mayor, but we don't, we don't have a historic district commission, but the Main Street oversees the historic. but the Main Street oversees the historic district area as part of our downtown, but it's, we don't have.
Okay, that's fine, I'm just trying to be, you know, could understand.
Yeah, what, the way.
If I can't speak, I'll, I'll just be quiet and be listening.
The way that your historic district.
I understand that, I was on the Main Street Board.
It's on the buildings.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm just saying, I understand verbiage, cause I was on the Main Street Board. But my question, um, so the little sign that's in the bush, that's illegal, right? Cause it's on the historic Main Street, if, you know, I'm talking about, it's a bush right there in front of L and N. And so the little sign, about this big, it sits in the bush, right? I got lights now, so I can take off. I don't want to break the law.
Yeah, that's a problem too.
And then I put my sidewalk sign on the sidewalk, is that illegal? I mean, it's saying the L and N is all.
That's the sign I'm talking about.
Would you take that up every night?
Some business owners are worried about, they're not getting a lot of foot traffic and people don't know they're open, so they're putting the triangular, the folding, the A-frame signs on their sidewalk.
I get her, uh.
I get it for you, a lot of businesses, so they're allowed to do those, right? With the, if they vote, they'll put them in and then, or not?
I'd take it up every day.
Yeah, as long as you take it up every day, it's not really a permit sign.
No.
Portable movable signs, sandwich board signs, commonly found are the only portable, uh, freestanding signs that are permitted other than special temporary signs. So yes, we're, uh, we're being qualified.
Alright, that's enough to talk about.
Thank you.
Mayor, I got one question.
Okay.
What about the property in front of the Walmart where people advertise? What does it sort of say about that?
Well, you can't, it's public property, you can't. Although I have let, I have let churches and rodeos and different things put it up there as long as it was gonna be up there like a week or two weeks, you know, and then they have to take the thing.
And, and that kind of thing, like, I can understand promoting rodeo, especially something like that or lumberjack, that's. And we can address that easily, so, which gives you some flexibility.
I made this, bibles, the church is doing for bibles, good.
Right, but it's up there just for a week or so.
Yeah.
I, I didn't see anything wrong with that.
And that can be addressed in, in that, and, but you don't want that kind of stuff down in historic area. You want it, you know, if it's on city property, that's gonna be a call to.
There's always exceptions.
You're gonna be the one that has to make that exception.
Okay, uh, next item. This is just amending, uh, uh, an ordinance we already have in place. The ordinance, uh, is talking about removing grass or earth from or digging up streets, being unlawful. They want to include in that grass clippings in the road. Didn't we vote on this last month?
We introduced it last month. This is a, this is amending an ordinance already existing.
Cause I remember we turned out like an hour and a half.
Yeah, this is just amended something we already have, to add those word grass clippings. Okay, next, uh, adopt a resolution entitled, uh, oh, this is that Louisiana compliance questionnaire that, uh, that we just have to do every year.
It's for the audit team, they're doing, it's part of the audit process. In fact, they, they will be here at, um, story Monday, they'll be here all week.
Yeah. But that's adopted, uh, resolution that they require us to do. Uh, next item is the roofing proposal. This, we had a hailstorm come through and this is, the adjusters came out, looked at all the roofs and, um, they sent us a check for a hundred. How much did they send?
Twenty two thousand.
Hundred and two thousand. And we've gotten a couple of bids on, um, repairing the, the damage that they found. And, um, let's see, we got those bid, oh.
Do you know which year, we have a lot, seven on the list.
Let's see, on this bid here, breaks it down. Um, concession roof.
And I'm presuming I said the right complex, concession roof.
Thirty four ninety five, thirty four hundred ninety five dollars. Driver's license office, ten thousand, five eighty five. RV community center, eighteen thousand, eight hundred. City jail, seven hundred. Chamber of Commerce building, fourteen thousand, three seventy. CAC building, twenty three thousand, four oh five. Civic center, twenty four thousand, two hundred and ten. Grand total, ninety four, four twenty five. What's our deductible interest?
We have ten dollars on our best, but that's, but they go right now, just the check for a hundred and two.
That's for Redline Roofing, okay. And then we have one for Doug Hanson Construction, I've shown you, and his is a hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and sixty for the same, same items that listed over here.
So Jason's was like ninety something?
Uh, ninety four, four twenty five.
Mike, what do you think?
This is one ten, three sixty. So, I mean, we're going to those to y'all, mind you not, to vote on that.
And that's, I mean, like, this building says.
Asphalt. It's, it's whatever that asphalt shingles, it was shingles.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, but I'm saying that's roofing the whole building.
These are shingles.
Half, they're not all, all shingles, part, part shingle, part flat.
Yeah, that, uh, membrane stuff, you know, most of the, the CACs almost all, just like front of it is.
Yeah, half of the shingles, those halves ten, over the ten over here.
Yeah, it's like west side, it's ten, the roof on it's a ten roof. Okay, we'll do that. Our next item is city employee manual. Uh, Derek's been, um, updating our, uh, city employee manual. You just need to introduce this, right?
Well, I don't know if we need to introduce it here, or I still got some questions and I need to sit down with Shelley because, and, but I gotta wait till she can sort it all out.
Oh, so you're saying you're not ready to bring it up?
No, I, I, I'll just tell you what I, what I've done. I took the manual, which was dated January, the current manual, which was dated January one of two thousand nine. Several things where I've paid it throughout the years. Uh, you know, and looking at it, a lot of it is fairly, and, and still pretty good, but there were some things we needed to update, like the employment and all that, so that we'd be in compliance with the, the feds. I started back in May of this year and, uh, start working on what, you know, the course of my life turned, changed for the next few months. And I've gotten back on it, but I do want to sit down with Shelley and, uh, go over it. Uh, because some of it's gonna tie back to what we talked about the other day, the job descriptions and the battery conditions and all that. So that's, but I'm not gonna bother you because I know how all that can fall, so.
Yeah, we are, they'll be here all week next week, and then the following week, I'm making vacation.
You're good for us.
We're gonna have all the needs, okay? That, that'll work.
Alright, so who will, we'll take that off. Okay, Chief, you got the next two items.
First one, Tyler Atkins, I was four up and down, I brought him before the council, uh, to hire him full time and I dropped the ball, I didn't do it. So, he's been working for approximately the last month or two. As a full-time officer, but receiving pay as a part-time officer. So I'm asking the council to hire him full time and backpay him from the time that he began working as a full-time worker.
That was a day, maybe full time.
Can you look back and see when he started getting eighty six hours every two weeks?
I'll get finally get checked on that one.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any questions about that? Or problems? Okay. And the other one is, we've had a motor go out in a police car and I can purchase a used motor and have it installed for approximately about five thousand dollars. Just asking for the approval of purchasing a motor and getting a police car back there.
What car, what car, what is it, one of those explorers or?
No, it's two thousand fourteen Chevy Caprice, one of the last ones I bought.
Approximately a hundred miles?
Hmm, it's approximately a hundred thousand miles.
Asked you, uh, I'm gonna ask you this real, because I was looking at, if you got that police supervision, uh, supervision fund, you got a couple hundred thousand, and would it be not more advantageous for us to purchase maybe a new vehicle, excuse me? A new vehicle or a number one, to put a, a motor in a car that's that old?
We can spend, we can spend fifty or sixty thousand.
Well.
Because, so once you buy a, a police car, if you go buy a brand new, it doesn't come with lights, it doesn't come with.
Right, you gotta get all that, but we have.
So you're gonna spend not only.
Right.
You're gonna spend about thirty five thousand on a new vehicle and then you're gonna spend another ten to fifteen thousand putting all that stuff on there.
And, and it's my understanding, and I understand that, because I was looking at prices and all this, the, uh, when I had across public agenda. Question I have for the mayor and Shelley is this account that we have this money in. It, it's not technically, it wasn't figured into the budget system. It sits out there, it's money that sits out that you gather off of tickets and things. Would it, would it not be better to find, find something new or add there? I'm just trying to make it better for y'all.
If you wanna spend that kind of money, let's buy them all pistols instead of them having to buy their own pistols and buy them tasers, so they all have tasers, uh.
I mean, I, I understand, I understand that, but every day I watch, uh, and I, it comes through my neighborhood too. There's one that comes through, there comes. And it's just, it's just kind of, uh, you know, and that's not just your vehicles, that's some of the others in the city too, that we need to.
And I agree with you that that's, that's a problem. Uh, but on our city streets, you can buy a brand new one, you know, within six months, it's gonna be going everywhere.
What, what, did you get a price on a new motor for it?
The new motor's eleven thousand dollars, that's clean install. That's just, that's just the motor, not shipped here. That five thousand is that other shipped here and gets installed.
That's a, a V eight?
Uh, V eight, six point oh liter. Now I can have the other motor redone, that's got a hundred thousand miles and it'll cost you sixty two hundred. Or I can buy, or I can buy this used motor.
Did they tell you how many miles are on it?
On the used motor?
Yeah.
Approximately the same amount.
Warranty?
Uh, I'm gonna say five or six thousand miles, it wasn't much of an warranty.
I would just like to go with five thousand.
But we won't turn it down to new, if y'all wanna buy some brand new, we saw that.
It's in a fund that we have out there that's not technically in budget. It's for, it's, that's what it's for, put back into the police department. And that's what I'm thinking is, not necessarily new, but surely there's gotta be something out there that we can look at. What about through the state program? Cause I, I'd like to buy local, local, but doesn't the state have a, uh?
You can buy, you could get through the L gap, but we always spend a L gap on city sewer and water. Goes to other projects, it doesn't come to the police department in thirteen years.
Don't they have a fleet vehicle purchase program?
You do, but you're still talking thirty five thousand dollars.
You can buy a state, you might be off state contract, but that's.
Yeah, yeah. Check, I'm sure it'd be a charger.
Uh, no, you can afford, you buy a charger, you buy Chevrolet. Each one of them has a state contract, but it's, it's not that much of a savings. The last one, I, when I first took office, we bought one, brand new, uh, Donnie Cohen was still driving it. And Rex got one. Uh, but like I said, it wasn't that much of a savings. But if we wanna spend that money in the police information, let's do more of it.
Well, what are we, what are we holding in there for when I ask that question? I'm not asking all the questions, Nick, I wish y'all would too, ask some questions too, so.
What I wanna, what I would like to see is us getting on some kind of rotating basis that every year you get two cars, every year.
It used to be that way.
And because I think that would alleviate a lot of these problems that we're buying used vehicles and used motors. And I, if we would get on a rotating basis like that, I don't think, I think this would alleviate some of our problems. And we need, we need to do.
We used to buy two vehicles every year and rotate them out, but that was, that was stopped. It was expensive.
And what I did in the past was I bought, when I bought this Chevy Caprice, I'd buy two used vehicles.
That would be done like in March or something? You bought a couple, two, three?
It was, this is one of them that I bought, that, that went down. And I would buy.
March, it's, it's gone back.
I would buy, I don't think we bought it in March, I was thinking it was.
It was in, I mean, I just come on.
I mean, earlier than that. But anyway, uh, when COVID hit, they're not really making police cars. Get your hands on a, on a new police car, it's almost impossible. So, what I did in the past was I'd buy these two used ones that had been leased out to another company. They already come pretty much painted, they come with cages. Uh, only thing I had to do was get the black and white paint scheme, try to buy a white one or a black one to do the paint scheme. And then just stick a radio, because it's already got lights, it's Christmas, it's everything in.
I can see a, a, a police car, around fifty, ten thousand miles on it. Fifty, no, I'm sorry, fifty two thousand miles on it, or it was a two thousand, ten.
They're supposed to say it had to be old, because they couldn't make it to the ground.
On an average, what does one of your vehicles or one of yours mileage wise be put on in a year?
You can't go off the miles on the police cars because they sit there and idle.
Yeah, you gotta go by a lot of hours.
You'd have to go, you'd, you'd have to swap it over to hours.
Okay, guarantee, police cars have a button you can, uh, I don't know.
I've never seen anyone.
Yeah, they, they have something kind of like.
Like my truck's got idle hours on it. No, none of these police cars, they're old enough, I mean.
We're still driving a truck that I drove when I was hired here twenty years ago, trying to get it, make it keep going.
Boob's got?
No. No, it's a white truck.
That poor Boob, he deserves better.
That truck that Boob's got was, we had, the police department had it, gave it back to us, we got it back going. It's went back before shore. I, we, me and Will have been trying to save money by using these vehicles and keeping them going to help save the city money. And now it's done got to the time, like you and I talked the other day, it's got to the point where we're both driving stuff that's, we're slap out, it's time to start.
That's why I said what I said, I mean. So I think you need to look into that between now and the first of the year.
I really do. Are you talking about buying used, are you talking about buying brand new?
The best we can do. I mean, if you can find two cars that's got ten thousand miles at a great deal, get them.
If we can find, okay, since you brought that up, we're forced to buy local, you can't, you can't do that.
Why are we forced to buy local?
We have to buy, we have to buy from what's here.
You sure would.
Why?
Well, of the media has put it out.
That's what I was, that's what we've done in the past. I went all over street proportions, took a cannon missing and got bid for prices. Regardless of what they were, we had to buy it here.
Is that something written in city law?
Was this when they came up?
Yeah, yeah. Yes, the council voted it.
It was last time.
We, we can, we can change that, can't we?
Sure, yes, you can.
Sure.
Change it.
I mean, cause I can go to East Texas and buy a truck and the taxes are gonna be paid straight to Louisiana.
I, I agree with you, I, I agree a hundred percent, but I'm telling you what's happened here in the past. We can do all that, but it don't work. We have to be, we need to buy from Chevrolet.
Cause we changed orders.
But if you say and tell me, yes, go get it, mend it for two thousand dollars difference, I can't.
That's not an ordinance.
There's no order.
It's not falling under the bill policy.
No, there's no policy.
Does it not fall under the bill law?
I mean.
Because it's over circumstantial.
Nicole, you, you and Stacy, y'all learn what happened.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, then I'm not wrong.
The best thing is that it's a fraction free, so all of it's always required free drives.
I mean. I'll just say it, when James and Bob Todd find out we go to Menden or Streetport to get a vehicle, it upsets them because they're a local business, we should do business with our local businesses. And he comes in here and he voices his opinion and we buy it from him.
It's up to the council, the council voted it.
But you don't have a one dealership in this town. I understand that, but that's what's happened in the past, and along with.
I'm gonna tell you, if you decide to do, go away from that, you're probably better off leasing vehicles.
Yeah.
Trading them back in, getting a little.
But they go off mileage down, when you lease.
Right, you can buy.
I know the sheriff's office, that's what, that's what most police departments and sheriff's offices are doing at this point in time. That's why I try to pick up their scraps and save the cities some. I know the sheriff's office, and that's what, that's what most police departments and sheriff's offices are doing at this point in time, that's why I try to pick up their scraps and save the cities.
And City of Jonesburg does that, and he was going to send his representative up here to talk to us about.
Well, therefore, I mean, under the work trucks, they would probably not go over that mileage within two years, cause don't they?
I don't know what the mileage is, I don't know what they have, what's your stipulations?
Well, and a big problem you have, and, and it's not just, it's the city is going, you know, you've had that problem with our truck out there at the hospital, they don't take care of it, it's not there. And, and I don't know how fix that problem, come out where you got what's coming in.
We just gotta hire good people, you know?
Well, I'm just throwing that out there. I mean, I'm not against buying new vehicles.
I'm not against buying new vehicles. And I agree with you, when I went to work for the police department, before I ever went to work for the sheriff's office, they had two cars, and then they had a clunker that was sitting over in case those went down. When you got in that one car that ran twenty-four hours a day, you would find bubble gum wrappers, chicken bones, or whatever. When I took over as chief, I was able to gather up enough cars and assign an officer to that car, and that's when it got started, started taking care of it. And they're like, look, kids, no, I don't want him in my car, his, his is broke, broke down, hey, y'all got a sheriff, no, I don't want him driving, I don't want nobody else driving my car.
You got some to take better care of than others.
And I, and I think, like we were, I mean, it don't have to be brand-new, but if it's got low mileage on it and still got warranties.
But finding a police car, like I said, with COVID, and even finding, you look at the, the lights, there's no new vehicles on the lights, used vehicles are as cost as much as new is now.
I mean, you may, you may have to go the new route, but.
I can do what you're asking, yes.
He could buy them a pickup truck, ten, ten, twenty thousand.
That's probably wrong, that's for twenty thousand dollars.
And nobody else might like that idea, but I think it's smart business to, to keep a rotation, that's what I was doing. It's a tough deal, it's, it's a hard deal either way to go, money, we don't have the money to spend on new stuff, but yet, uh, people complain about.
You end up spending fifteen, twenty thousand dollars a year on, you need to rebuild up, I mean, so, here's some of my cars, and I've never been a, I buy new if I can, I mean, I don't want nobody else's problem, and we, we were.
I'm a used guy, I believe in driving, I mean, my truck's got four hundred eighty-four thousand miles on it.
Somebody gonna pick you up on the road like that.
The utility department.
That's when I'll say, here's a piece, and I'll go buy a new one.
No, it's not electric cars.
Why, we used to do that, until Ray administration got in office, and the finances weren't what they were, and we couldn't, so we started, me and Will started doing other, making other options, doing the best we could, what we had.
Budget time, we're talking about it, budget time.
So you budget two vehicles every year?
I think, I think in the case swap, we have some.
I agree with him, just buying everything he, buying a twenty-five thousand dollar.
But I'm, but I'm gonna tell you now, before I agreed to pay, please, it's y'all's decision, before you agreed to spend seventy or eighty thousand dollars on cars, give them a raise, give them a raise. I mean, my, I got an officer that's working for fifteen dollars an hour, he's been here for forty-one years, and he's the highest-paid employee at the police department, other than.
Yeah, we're looking, gonna look at that, sure. Okay, I think that's about all.
I don't know, but yeah, I'm reminded of that.
Yes, yes.
Is there any questions? Can I buy a motor, or y'all wanna be late? We can buy bicycles.
What, what is it for?
It's a two thousand four Chevy Caprice.
Caprice.
Okay, uh, and I, I'm delighted to put on here, uh, the fact that, um, we have three bids to paint the West Side Community Center outside, the paint painted outside, and I'll bring that, those three bids to you, mind you know. It's a badly of, of being painted. Yes, it does, yeah, it does, uh, but. It, it looks really nice inside.
Inside.
West Side, that really nice. Okay, I, I don't have anything else, I believe that, we can come down to this, uh, unless y'all have something. Alright, thanks y'all.